Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Workshop. I'm County Commissioner Gwen Myers and I will turn this section over to our staff for the Land Development Code and the Tax Amendments.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. I'm going to provide the intro on this workshop and the intro to some of the amendments and then Mr. Israel Monsanto will run through some of the text of the amendments.
Point of order, can we have a roll call?
Sorry.
Yes, roll call from the Clerk's Office, please. Thank you Commissioner again.
Good afternoon, Hagan. Cameron Cepeda.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Wostel.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone. Okay, Adam.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner. So Commissioners, next slide please, Israel. So we're going to be covering three amendments here today. All three of these do have some history in that they were part of the Round 2 2022 Land Development Code amendments and were continued from that round to this workshop today to allow additional time to discuss the amendments and for the new Commissioners, Commissioners who are new to the Board to become familiar, a little bit more familiar with what's being proposed. Next slide please, Israel. The First Amendment is LDC 22-1113. This is an amendment that would change elements of the rezoning and zoning hearing master process as well as some of the criteria for serving as a land use hearing officer. Next slide please, Israel. A brief history on this, this amendment started with a workshop with the Board in December of 2021 on the land use meeting process. We received some input, the Board, which was addressed in April and again in June in proposed text of the Land Development Code. It was the subject of a workshop, September 14th, and the first public hearing was held on October 20th. Next slide. A brief overview of the current zoning process. Right now, there is a public hearing held by a zoning hearing master who is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. This is an evening public hearing at which evidence and testimony can be added into the record and the hearing would establish the record for Board of County Commissioners' consideration. At the conclusion of the hearing, that record closes and the ZHM renders a recommendation to the Board. Next slide please. The Board then considers the ZHM recommendations at the monthly land use meetings and they're considered either as part of the regular agenda or the consent agenda. And the Board has established criteria for a consent agenda that essentially is that there is no prior participation either at the zoning hearing master hearing or before from interested parties, that it is not increasing density in the rural area, it's not located on a failing road, and all consistent recommendations of approval. If those are met, then the application gets considered on the consent agenda. Next slide please, Israel. The Board will consider, for those items that are on the regular, the Board will consider those recommendations of the zoning hearing master as well as the entire record of the ZHM hearing that includes staff reports, agency reports, evidence entered into the record, and public testimony. At the Board stage, there is an opportunity for additional evidence to be added to the record. That opportunity is for situations that could not have been identified due exercise due diligence in time to present it to the land use hearing officer. Otherwise, oral argument is provided and that oral argument is limited to parties of record and parties of record are people who have either received notice or somehow participated in the process so far and what the Board considers is the record from the zoning hearing master. Next slide please, Israel. Summary of the proposed changes with this amendment is it would create an open record period between the close of the ZHM hearing and the BOCC meeting at which time new documentary evidence could be added into the record. And the proposal would have that open record period go up to 10 business days prior to the land use hearing. Another change is that at the Board of County Commissioners meeting, the public testimony would not be limited to the record. So at the Board hearing, these changes would allow anybody to appear and provide any relevant evidence or testimony regardless of whether it is in the record already. It proposes some changes to the qualifications and powers of the land use hearing officer. It changes the order of presentation for the Board of County Commissioners and zoning hearing master hearings and requires participation information be provided with mailed notice. And I'll just very briefly address those last three bullets because there are some changes in there that regard, as irrespective of how the Board would like to go on the process, changes or adjustments, we believe that there are some cleanup items that would be beneficial to consider. In the land use hearing officer powers, there's some changes to the powers and duties of the land use hearing officer that essentially conform, and these are in Section 902.01H, that conform the code language to the way the hearings are run today in that the current text provides for land use hearing officers, zoning hearing masters to, I would characterize it as be somewhat of an advocate in the process, maybe not the best word, become, allow the luho to be an active participant in the process rather than the conducting the hearing and rendering a recommendation. What is suggested to be struck is things that would allow the luho to request independent studies be performed, subpoenaing witnesses to the hearing and it is really just conforming it to how the hearings are run today. Two additional changes in the changes of order of presentation, there's a, what's proposed is for the zoning hearing master and BOCC hearings that county staff and planning commission would present first and then the applicant would present. We think this is a good efficiency change as when the current process where the applicants go first, they're presenting evidence to sort of set the table for what the application is and that is information that staff could provide and allow the applicant's presentation to be a bit more focused and reduce the redundancy in what's presented. The last bullet is, was a suggestion that we got from a stakeholder that our notice include information, kind of basic information on how to participate in the process, things like having a camera and audio if you're going to participate virtually and some additional guidance on the effect of their testimony tonight. With that, if there, Mr. Monsanto will run through the high level view of the text changes on the amendment. If there are any questions in advance of that, could adjust them now or at the conclusion of Mr. Monsanto's presentation.
Commissioner Owens, would you want to wait until the second part of the presentation then ask your questions or you would like to ask your question?
I guess I wanted to ask Mr. Gormley if he could recommend to us times for us to maybe, I don't want to get past, too far past something and then you move on to something else. So I'd like for you to maybe recommend to us when we should kind of take that break to discuss each of these changes if you don't mind.
Okay, certainly, yes. And I think the way I would recommend that is there are different sections of the code that are proposed for change and perhaps at the end of each of those sections would be a good time to do that if that suits the Board.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner, are you finished Commissioner Owen? Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you Madam Chair. And let me just ask one question about the consent items because I don't believe you're recommending any changes to that.
We're not recommending changes to that. The criteria for the consent agenda is not in the code currently. So we would, if there are some discussion to be had on the consent agenda criteria, I think this would be a great time.
I just want to make one comment about it and that is that the provision that kicks it out of consent if there's any participation at all really ought to be changed if there's any opposition at all. Because we've had a couple of cases that have ended up on the regular agenda and the only reason is because somebody came and spoke in support of the item and that kicked it out of the category of having no participation. And that seems like a silly loophole. The key is to make sure if there's opposition that we hear about it, not to, I think, bog down something that has unanimous support.
Understood and believe that we can, if that's the Board's, it makes a lot of sense and I have heard that concern as well. And that's the Board's will, we can adjust that change for the consent criteria.
Beyond that, I'm ready to move on. I just wanted to point that one thing out.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other Commissioner hands up so we can move on. Okay.
Thank you Commissioners. So in front of you Commissioners, we have the first section that's being amended through this Land Development Code amendment. This is Section 902.01 that pertains to the land use hearing officer and Mr. Gormley already touched on some of them. These section specific causes for removal of a hearing officer were eliminated and this will be subject to the contract of their services. Also qualification languages is being updated requiring relevant professional knowledge, certifications, and experience in zoning or similar matters. And also instead of the findings and recommendations rendered by the hearing officer, the language is being changed to require a reading report submitted by the hearing officers. The next page, the powers and duties language will be updated as also stated by Mr. Gormley and this is basically the sections that are being stricken out where the hearing officer asked for reading or brief to be filed on behalf of any participants. There is also an addition that prior to conducting any assignment hearing or application, the hearing officer shall have a duty to certify in writing that they have no conflict of interest of any of the assigned applications. And then the following page, the main changes is that subsection three eliminates the option by the hearing officer to obtain advice of a disinterested expert other than the land use hearing officer on law, planning, or zoning applicable to the record proceeding in front of them. Also subsection four extends the amount of years after the date of termination of a hearing officer to prohibit from acting as an agent or attorney in any application or matter before any commission, board, agent of county government office involving property that was subject to an application during the time that that hearing officer was in office. And that is the first section that concludes the first section, which is Section 902. Before we go to the next section, which is starting with Section 1003, if you have any questions.
Yes, we do have some questions. Commissioner Owen?
Sure, thank you. And Mr. Gormley, would you mind putting the, where it says proposed process, the changes slide? That kind of shows the breakdown, it kind of, I think it will help me when I'm asking some questions.
Israel, it was the PowerPoint slide.
Yeah, just the PowerPoint slide.
Got it.
Yes.
All right, you know, it seems to me that this is, and maybe there's just something I don't know that the Commissioners who have been here a while can enlighten me on. It seems like we're really, the ZHM here is under attack. For me, so far in just my brief time, the system we have in place tends to work beautifully, I think, and seamless. I mean, if I have any issues with, you know, we have the power to remand, which I think we've been utilizing greatly. And I guess I don't take it that the ZHM is telling me what to do. I think that they're, they have been adequately working within the parameters that they're supposed to. Now, I could be missing something. So I'm definitely going to listen to the prior Commissioners to try to build some type of foundation for what I see as a drastic change or something that in essence gets rid of the ZHM and then also with the luho that's creating parameters that look kind of arbitrary to me unless there can be some sense made of it. Let me ask, on the requirements for qualifications for the luho, Adam, what's being removed? Is there a particular profession that's being pulled out of there that would allow you to become one? Is it an engineer or some other type of profession?
Yes, currently Commissioner, the qualifications for land use hearing officer that they include that they have a degree in engineering or architecture and be licensed to practice in three years, for three years in the state of Florida. And that having a degree in architecture or engineering is proposed to be removed and it would allow then, it would leave the qualifications being an attorney or a AICP certified planner.
Is there a reason why an engineer is not qualified? I'm asking a question, literally I don't know the answer to. It's not rhetorical. Is there a reason why an engineer would be bad for this type of position?
I believe that some of the, some of the prior discussion focused on whether the profession had a code of ethics. I'll tell you, engineers do have a professional code of ethics. We have had people with engineering degrees serve as a luho and I couldn't tell you that I believe that they, those types of professions are incapable of adequately performing the luho duties.
Sure. And seven years, where did that number come from?
So the seven years came from a discussion with some of our stakeholders and it was, it was discussed that three years might not provide the appropriate seasoning and length of experience for somebody to serve as a land use hearing officer. I tell you that time that I've been here, we've never had a land use hearing officer with less than seven years experience, much less three. It's a quality, it's a criteria that is in there, but it was a stakeholder suggestion to have that time be seven years expanded from three.
Okay, so we're already in essence practicing that anyways.
Effectively, yes.
And I agree, I like the fact that to have ZHM and staff go first in that priority of orders. To me, that makes a lot of sense. It seems like we'll save time too, we're not rebuttling and going back and forth. I'm curious to what the other Commissioners said. I do think that that's probably easier on staff as well. Would you, would you agree with that?
I believe it would be and just easier for the process as a whole and it would, it would reduce the need for, potential for redundancy of setting the table before the staff presentation, which would do the same thing. I think that would be an improvement to the process.
Okay, and then on the, on the changes to the evidence, to me is just, coming as a practitioner of the law where we have to follow these rules specifically, otherwise it creates chaos in a courtroom, absolute chaos, where you have a situation where you could even withhold evidence at a Z, this is how I'm looking at it, correct me if I'm wrong, you could literally withhold evidence and purposely skip the ZHM and just bring evidence and additional testimony to us as a collective Board where, in essence, to me, that means the ZHM, why even have them? But am I, is that too much drama for you to say that that practice could actually exist if we make these changes that evidence just won't even matter at the ZHM stage because they can bring it at any time even up, leading up to the, up to the meeting with us? So the information that you would be providing us wouldn't take into account the new evidence obviously because they could bring it literally the day of. Is that, am I, am I getting that right or is that a little, am I overstating?
You're correct in that these changes would allow somebody to bring in evidence or testimony that wouldn't have been considered by the ZHM. I do need to correct something I said earlier, the open records period is actually seven working days, not 10 working days, but it would allow, it would allow additional documentary evidence to come in post ZHM. ZHM wouldn't have seen it up to the second Friday before the land use meeting. It would also allow the verbal, no limits on verbal testimony. So verbal testimony at the Board hearing could encompass things that were not presented at the ZHM. This process would allow that to occur as drafted.
Yeah, I mean, to me that sounds like chaos. I can tell you what that would mean in a courtroom and I do think that that's similar in this situation because we sit quasi judicial in these cases. So I really, I really would call, I'm not going to support that, I can tell you that right now. Again, I'm one Commissioner, but I'm not going to support that change. With the notice provision on how to participate, what do we provide in the current notice now? What could we do, Adam, to maybe clean some of this up in the notice provisions?
So what occurs at the zoning hearing masters now is there is a, well, there's two things. There's information on our webpage for people to participate virtually and what, you know, they would need in terms of capabilities. The suggestion was to include that, that type of information on the notice as well as at the beginning of the land use, I'm sorry, there's only hearing master hearing, there is a, there is, there's some information that's presented verbally, it's read out in front of each meeting that describes the process and the effect of testimony and what the Board will be considering. We think that that language could be flushed out a little bit more, a little bit more broadly in the notice.
I think that would be a great idea. Do you, I mean, I'm sure staff does too. I mean, I think that would alleviate some of the issues. Are we touching on when they request a continuance or is that going to be later? Is that next? On continuance requests by the applicants?
Right, so that, there's not a proposed change to that at this time?
Well, I'll just, and I'll just say, because I, from what I get from staff, it doesn't really, it's not really fair to you all how they can just request a continuance in the last final hour. And I don't know if it's something that it should be addressed in this or something later that we can, we can set some type of limitations on requesting a continuance, you know? People show up, as I think Commissioner Kemp has alluded to a lot, and then they request these continuances. I don't think it's really fair, you know?
And Commissioner, I apologize, there is another issue, it's not addressed in here, but something that we have seen is the timing of a continuance as a matter of right. So an applicant can, preceding the zoning hearing master, make a continuation at some point and they can get that granted as a matter of right, provided they provide notice to those parties have already been noticed. The timing of that coincides with when planning commission staff reports are due. And what that's causing sometimes is if that, if the continuation as a matter of right request is made at the last possible time, the planning commission staff doesn't know if it's going to be continued or not and they need to go through the, they need to prepare their reports, they need to file their reports in something that might end up being mooted by continuance and change to the application. So what would request, would suggest is that we could adjust the time that the planning commission staff report is due to provide a little window of time between, okay, we'll know if a continuation as a matter of right is going to be requested and if not, then the report would be due.
Saves so much work for you all. I mean, that sounds like something that, unless, unless the other Commissioners disagree, that we should look into, you know, just for, to save, save a lot of unneeded work, unnecessary work.
Yes, we think that would be a very positive change if the Board were inclined.
Okay, great. Well, I don't want to take too much time. I'll just leave it with the Commissioners here that, you know, I think a lot of these changes to the ZHM are drastic. As far as the luho goes, setting those qualifications, I don't see why an engineer is not qualified, but maybe that I can be enlightened on that. I'm okay with the seven years, I guess, if we're already, we're already doing it in practice. I think we could beef up our notice provision and I am not for allowing just complete chaos in the boardroom with new evidence on, you know, the days before the, or the day of a hearing. So that's where I'm at. Thank you everybody.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Owen. For the record, I received notice from Commissioner Hagan's office. Commissioner Hagan has been delayed and unable to join this workshop. So Clerk Office, please record that information. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you Madam Chair. Yeah, I agree with both things that have been said by Commissioner Cohen on the previous item. I don't want to bog down time. If we can leave things in consent unless there's opposition makes sense. I was, I was confused why the direct focus on the ZHM was happening. I actually looked up why and it would have been before anybody on the commission, even before Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Myers got elected their first time. This was from a hearing in 2019 and I'm not going to go into the details of it, but what I found happened is that one person kind of wasn't getting their way and these, this is kind of like a retooling to try and make it to where you can more easily attack the ZHM or luho, which both, I guess, this is kind of, there's two different sections. So I just wouldn't want that for anybody. They have pretty, pretty strict terms that govern them by the state of Florida. I was actually going to oppose the seven years just because I know people that can do a job better at five years than they can at 20 years, but if it's coming from the stakeholders and maybe it's because from a quasi judicial slash hearing process, maybe they just need more tenure, I'm willing to support the seven years if there's a consensus on that. I just didn't want to be too restrictive to where if we, if we put seven years in stone but we all have somebody apply that's only got five or six years and we really like them, I don't know, just seven years is quite a bit of time. I do like the reorganization of the way that the hearing is going to go. It confused me during the hearings that I have sat on that we would hear from the applicant and then they would try and kind of keep circling back instead of everybody saying what they have to say, then the applicant presenting and being there ready for questions. So I won't beat up too many of the other items. I think Commissioner Owen did a good job. This was a lot that came through and I think that it's a little, it's just too far on the luho, so I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Wostel. I don't see any other hands, so staff, we can continue.
Commissioner Kemp, I have my hand.
Okay, I can't see you at all Commissioner Kemp for whatever reason.
That's funny, I have my camera on and everything.
Okay, now I see you.
Of course, I just have a lawnmower out here now, so I hope that's not too. To Mr. Gormley, so right now we have a section on our agenda that is public hearings, land use. Both the brand new Commissioners, that's been on the agenda every time. Can you explain the distinction? We have consent agenda, we have public hearings, land use, and then we have our regular agenda. and then we have our regular agenda. Can you explain what puts, we heard a little bit about what puts it on the consent agenda. What puts it on the public land use agenda?
Yeah, so Commissioner, thank you for that question. The public hearing land use section of the land use agenda is the section on which minor modification applications are heard. And just briefly, minor modification is a change to a previously approved plan development zoning. There are major and minor modifications. The major modification goes through the rezoning process, ZHM, board review. The minor modifications, which do not include adding new uses and very small thresholds for increases in density, those do not go to a zoning hearing master. They come directly to the board in a public hearing. So the board would be the first body to hold a public hearing and would be the final decision maker. We would put other items on that section of the agenda. Occasionally, we would have DRI, development order modifications, that don't go to the zoning hearing master, and they would go on that section of the agenda. In short, is that those are applications that don't go to the ZHM, and they come straight to the board for consideration in a public hearing.
So we could have 50 people show up during those hearings, and they can bring in any evidence they want. They could bring in anything, lies, you know, makeup stuff, or they could tell us something that just occurred that was new. But they can come in, and we don't even have to have their names ahead of time or anything. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes ma'am.
Okay, so that's the procedure we have in place now that both, all the new commissioners have experienced already. We have that happening every single land use and have had it for all six years I've been here. So there's not been an issue with that that I can remember at any time in six years. The issues, which have been continual, has been the, and some of it got changed already. But the inability of citizens to come forward or to understand the complications and the requirements that were made for them to participate, and the process being so extreme and long, and not understanding that, and continually coming forward. And I'll say that prior to this, Commissioner White very much was very strong about objecting to the fact that that was a problem over and over and over again, which is one of the reasons we made some changes in these. But the, in terms of coming to the regular hearing with new evidence of any sort, what is the recommended rule now to, for a citizen to speak and to bring evidence in that wasn't part of what they presented at the ZHM? What would be the requirement here?
Under our current process or under the proposed?
Proposed.
Under the proposed.
Maybe you should do both.
Currently, the, a citizen constituent showing up to provide public comment would need to limit their comments to information that's already in the record. And that record consists of all the applicant, all application, all supportive information, reports, testimony provided at the zoning hearing master hearing. And that testimony would need to be limited to that record. There is the opportunity to request consideration of additional evidence, which I would characterize as kind of a relief valve, a safety valve of if something were to occur that couldn't have been discovered in time to present it at the zoning hearing master, then that can be considered if the board finds it meets the criteria of additional evidence. That would draw a remand back to the zoning hearing master to consider that, unless the applicant waived any objection to that being included in the record. So that's the current process, is basically limited to the record with some opportunity for consideration of an extraordinary additional evidence circumstance.
So right now, if a citizen came, they had gone to the ZHM, they had made testimony. But in the meantime, I don't know, a plane crashed on the property, a major flood, which this has been an issue before, happened. A major flood happened, some alterations were made to the property that weren't apparent at the ZHM, some things were done. But they, if we didn't pass this, they could not, we couldn't, we wouldn't be talking about them, and they could, the public couldn't bring them to our attention at all. Even if they were, even if 20 people were there, and they're going, commissioners, please, you know? We wouldn't be able to take that information.
Commissioner, I think I didn't explain that, I think I didn't explain that well. The scenarios that you described could be the basis for an additional evidence request. I think the ones that you described are all, hey, this wasn't, I didn't think of it, or I didn't, you know, those would be probably pretty good examples of things that would be recommended to meet that threshold for additional evidence.
And then? Under these proposed changes?
Under the current, under the current, under the current.
This is the kind of thing that, I'm trying to let the new commissioners understand that this is the kind of things that we had issues with and wanted to be able to make exceptions for. And that's why we did this, and that's why we also even gave it seven days in advance. So there would be notice. But prior, under the, without these changes, this has been a problem. I mean, I think you explained them well, and I understood them, maybe when I responded. But, you know, this is why we want to have changes in the proposed process to allow for urgent conditions like these. I mean, it just is actually pretty, you know, common sense, and speaks to the citizens who came frustrated with this. So I'll just, in terms of that, and I wanted clarification from you on how that works, Mr. Gormly. And we do have in the, the regular public hearing land use, we allow that today. And we've allowed it always, that anyone can come in, and they don't even have to give notice seven days in advance. They can walk in, 20 people can walk in to the hearings. We've never had it happen because it's not really a problem. But when it's a problem, it's a problem. And for, this is what this proposed change speaks to. Nothing radical, dramatic, crazy, simply the frustrations that we've had over issues and problems like this. And then I'll just speak to the qualifications of, there was only one, actually, I don't, the, just to say, the LHO and the zoning hearing master, I know I've heard much said about that, but basically, we're changing the zoning hearing master name. I think the proposal might be to change it to LHO, which is what the title is for all the other hearing officers in our land use department in the county. Is that correct?
It is correct, Commissioner. All the, we have two different hearing processes. We have the zoning, what we call the zoning hearing master process now. That's where rezoning applications are heard that come to the board. Then we have the land use hearing process, land use hearing officer process, LHO. Those hearings consist of special use applications, variances, primarily what's heard, and those are, the final decision is made for those. Both, the, both hearing types are conducted by a land use hearing officer. It's the same people that do both. It's when they're doing the zoning, the term that was given to them was zoning hearing master. And you're correct, the change would remove references to zoning hearing master and refer to them all as land use hearing officers. They are, they're all land use hearing officers now. Just over time, as we've had the zoning hearing master process, that label has been applied to distinguish between the two processes.
Because I think there is some confusion in terms of that. No one's saying, get rid of the ZHM, but make it uniform throughout the department, all these different people that are doing the same thing. They're all land use hearing officers. So it's just a very confusing distinction that we've made that has not helped with that. And I think it continues on, and with the public as well. And finally, just in terms of, I can say that for me, I looked at processes in all other, in many other counties. And to my knowledge, I think, and I'm just recalling from memory now, that only, maybe it was like Lee County or Charlotte County that had an actual LHO pre-hearing process besides a planning commission process, besides coming to the board. And there, the only other example I could find restricted it to only a land use certified attorney to do the hearings. That was it. The rules that we have now are not enforceable, except through the bar. So that if you're not an attorney, our rules of, you know, any rules that we have in terms of conflicts of interest or anything else, don't apply. What we did find is that between the planners, and we have a, one land use hearing officer now, who is a degree planner, I believe, and one is a degree attorney. Both of them have similar code of ethics that, and have commissions or seated certification groups that can handle complaints. So someone who was an attorney, who was a land use hearing officer, is definitely subject to the kinds of rules if a complaint was made against them. Someone apparently who was a planner, the same thing. Otherwise, in other professions, that does not hold. And we have no possibility of doing that through any kind of professional organization. And as I said, the only other place I found where they actually have these hearings is whatever that county was to the south. And they were far more restrictive in only letting attorney that was board certified in land use to conduct and do that job. That was in their qualifications when I looked at them. So ours are actually much broader by allowing an attorney or a planner. And that was the reason that that was generated, just to speak to it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Owen, I'm going to ask you to keep it brief so we can stay on schedule.
Yeah, I'll be super fast. Mr. Gormly, Commissioner Kemp really didn't let you answer that question. I, maybe I was under the misunderstanding. Under the current as to allowing new evidence, the examples she gave, which were plane crashes, floods, I'll add sinkholes, they can, we can bring that additional evidence under the current, correct? Or am I wrong on that, Commissioner Kemp?
That's correct. The additional evidence, which is different from the open records period that's being suggested, that the current additional evidence process would allow consideration of, those are pretty good examples of things that might fit that were unable to be discovered through due diligence to be presented to LHO. So those things, they, somebody could make an additional evidence request under the process today, and those extraordinary circumstances are likely ones that we'd recommend meet the criteria for additional evidence. And that would allow it to come in and either be remanded to the ZHM or be considered as part of the record if the applicant waives any objection to that.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted you to be able to answer it. So that's all I wanted to clarify. Thanks.
And thank you, Commissioner Owen.
May I just ask for one? I'm sorry.
Hold on, Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Cohen, and then I'll come back to you, Commissioner Kemp.
Well, if Commissioner Kemp wants to finish her thought, that's fine. And then maybe I can go ahead.
It might be, it might be relevant. I didn't mean to have cut off any answer. How, my question is, Mr. Gormly, and I didn't mean to cut off an answer. I thought I was, I thought, I thought I maybe didn't characterize it as I should have, and you were. So how would the proposed changes change what is going on now?
Right, so the proposed changes would, it would allow additional documentary evidence to be submitted during an open record period, which is, would extend from the close of the ZHM hearing up to seven working days prior to the land use meeting. So during that window, additional documentary evidence could be submitted without limitation. It's, there wouldn't be any, you know, extraordinary circumstance or any other finding necessary for that to be added as part of the record for the board's consideration. For verbal testimony, it would allow any person to appear before the board, whether they're a party of record or not, and provide any relevant verbal testimony in front of the board at the board hearing.
Okay, I appreciate that because I know we had a terrible, we had lots of citizens in about a terrible flooding condition, and it had happened between the ZHM and our hearing. And that's why we were looking at this, because it was not to be addressed. So thank you for clarifying that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Are you still on mute, Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, couple of comments about this. First of all, you know, I did land use in a similar way in the city of Tampa for eight years before I was elected to the county commission. And the process there is significantly different than it is here. It's the first pass on everything. There are no hearing officers for anything. And everybody in the world can come in and talk and offer testimony up until five minutes before the vote is taken. I will tell you categorically, I think our system here at the county is better. And I particularly really rely on the report from the zoning hearing master as part of what I consider to be a three-legged stool when trying to figure out how to vote on something. The zoning hearing master, the staff report, and the planning commission. That said, I don't think that these changes are actually that meaningful in the sense that whether or not it's called a zoning hearing master or a land use hearing officer, at the end of the day, it's up to you as a commissioner to put as much weight as you think is appropriate on that report. And I think that Commissioner Kemp, I think, did a good job of explaining that with attorneys and planners, you have a very good remedy due to their professional certifications and requirements that if there are problems, they can be disciplined or dealt with within the rules that apply to their specific, that apply to their specific profession. In terms of the issue related to the introduction of evidence after the hearing master's decision, I would say that having a cutoff time, to me, is the most important thing so that an applicant is not going to get blindsided at the meeting with some kind of Katie Bar's do the door situation with new stuff. There's, it has to come in, I think it was, you said, seven working days before the hearing. That allows ample time, I think, for an applicant to be prepared. And so I don't really see that as a problem. I think the reason for that is that over the years, there's a lot of dissatisfaction sometimes among our constituents when they find out that the opportunity to talk to us and communicate when they find out that the opportunity to talk to us and communicate with us has been cut off before we make a decision on something. And it, you know, they feel like we elected you to this position. And how come we're not even allowed to give you our opinion in advance of your making a, a decision? And, and sometimes that, 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 you know, puts you in an uncomfortable position. And I just have found over the years that I think I'm capable of listening to those, to that testimony, and yet still coming to a, a decision based on the evidence and on the record, once we get there. And it, you know, it's up to me if someone raises something to ask the applicant about it and get it clarified and give them a chance to respond to it. So I guess what I just want to say at the end of the day is that while it, it appears that these are big changes, I really don't think that they are. I think that this ultimately comes down to, still, how the individual commissioners do their job and weigh the evidence and weigh the different things that, that come in front of them.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Okay, Steph, we can continue. I see no other hands up.
Right. So Commissioner, would you like us to run through the rest of the proposed text changes on this amendment? Some of what was spoken to would be the same material that we've, that we would speak to in the text. But we can.
I think we could go over the texts ourselves.
Okay.
Agreed.
I agree.
Then Commissioner, with that, the, the next amendment that we have is the, is LDC 22-1115. These are changes to affordable housing development standards in the land development code. And just a bit of, of history on, on this, there are, there are density bonuses that are currently provided for in the comprehensive plan for affordable housing projects. The density bonuses essentially allow, in most cases, that, that the project could develop at the next highest land use category for density and, and in some cases for floor area ratio. That's square footage. The, 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 there have been some changes already made in the comprehensive plan. And this amendment would, has two parts. One part is it would conform to the land development code language to the new comp plan language. The two lang, the two, the two documents were previously consistent in their language. So the, the comprehensive plan changed. And the part of this amendment would be to, to have the companion change in the land development code. Those are, are dealing with the affordable housing density bonuses. The, the gist of the change that was adopted for, for affordable housing density bonuses is that it, the income thresholds have been raised to be considered an affordable housing project. It previously was at 80% of area median income, AMI, so that a project, affordable housing project need to be affordable to, to a, a household at 80% AMI. And, and the threshold there is that, that the rent or, or, or mortgage payment wouldn't be more than 30% of that family's income. And that's, that was, that was the measuring stick for affordability. The, what has been changed is that threshold has, has raised from 80% to 100% AMI. It kept affordable housing set aside at 20% of the units. So 20% of the units would need to be affordable to receive that bonus. The change is that, again, gone from 80 to 100. And now half the units, half, at least half the units have to be available to households that make 60% of the area median income. And the other portion up to 50% could be at 100% of the AMI. So that's one change that was made. There's also some changes to the criteria for where affordable housing developments could be considered. And, and those are, those changes, you know, I would say that those changes are already effective by virtue of being adopted in the comprehensive plan. And, and this, part of this amendment would essentially be a cleanup to conform the two documents. There is another group of changes that are proposed in this amendment. And those, these are changes that are not tied to land development code changes. And they, they have to do with minimum project size for affordable housing projects in standard zoning districts. And in those, there's currently an allowance that an affordable housing project can develop in standard zoning districts that have a set of rules, including minimum lot size and setbacks. It would allow for, allows for affordable housing projects to develop at smaller lot sizes than the zoning would otherwise require. And, and the idea with that is that there could be a greater lot yield. So a four-unit, you know, project that's at a density of four units per acre with a RSC four residential, single-family conventional, ostensibly four units to the acre zoning district has a requirement for 10,000 square foot lots, just about a, just about a quarter of an acre. When a project is developed and there's roads and there's infrastructure, other infrastructure stormwater put in, that takes up land that could otherwise be used to, to provide for the lot sizes. So the effect is you get a lower yield in those districts. The idea with the, with the minimum lot size was to allow for a greater yield of, of the number of units. Currently, the code has a minimum site area to, to use this, 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 this provision. And the, and the amendment is proposing to eliminate that, that minimum project size. So if, if this was adopted, it wouldn't, there could be one-off lots that take advantage of, of this, of this opportunity. This was a, was a, something that was recommended by the consultant that redid the density bonuses. There's another proposed change in, in this text. And it's actually noted in red. And it would allow for the admin, allow for planned development zonings that have dwelling types in there, including single-family duplex, triplex and four-unit townhomes. Allow for those units to be changed and exchanged administratively without having to go through a public hearing process, but not resulting in a increase in the number of units. It would only allow the, the change in the unit types. That's the, the gist of the amendment. If the helpful, ask Israel to, to just briefly highlight those, those change sections with the text that's shown on your screen.
I'm going to.
Unless there's any questions at this point. Sorry.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, very briefly, I, I want to just, for the, the benefit of the new commissioners, mention that the issue of the percentage of AMI was really, it was the source of a very spirit, it was the root of a very spirited debate here. Because I, I think everybody was struggling with what is going to be the most effective thing that is going to, you know, help the most people find affordable housing. And by going to 60% of AMI, the belief was that you were going to perhaps be able to target the people who were most in need, who are, who are struggling the most to find housing. I think that on the other side of it though, was that if you go too low, you make it impossible for the numbers to work, for these developers to actually make these things work at all. And so there, it was a real, it was either go to 60 or 80. And, and, and there was a lot of uncertainty about which would work. And so I don't know that, that anyone ever felt like there was a right answer to this. It was more like trying to, to, to find the sweet spot of what number was going to help the most people. I, I hope that's been helpful. I, I, it, it encapsulates many, many minutes of discussion among a lot of different views.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Owen?
Oh yeah, and I, I did watch those meetings, Commissioner Cohen. And I, I know that there were really good in-depth discussions about that. And if it, Mr. Gormley, that we're just talking about conforming to the, to the comprehensive plan anyways as to, as to that aspect, right? So.
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
I mean, to me, that seems like a no-brainer. I, I don't know how I feel about making these exceptions on lot sizes and setbacks. I mean, that's, again, like I always talk about these slippery slopes once we start making exceptions on these, this, this type of zoning and development. It does raise an eyebrow for me. Perhaps I can be convinced otherwise, but, but, but you take some issue with that. But, but otherwise, yes, I, I did, Commissioner Cohen. I, I watched those discussions. And again, why, why wouldn't we conform with the comprehensive plan? So I, I, I don't have any issue with that. Thanks.
And thank you, Commissioner Kemp.
Yeah, I was just going to elaborate. I appreciate, appreciate Commissioner Cohen's explanation. And it doesn't seem like we need more. But I just wanted to point out, because it, it can be confusing about the fact that we make 20% of the units in the affordable housing category. So if it's 100 units, it's 20. And if it's half at 60 and half at 100, it's 10 of the units at each. Just to be clear, because I think it's really easy to get that confused somehow with all the percentages and numbers.
Thank you. Commissioner Winstone?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Gormley, can you tell me that, I know this is in alignment with the CPA, but do you know if there's direct exclusions to completely isolate or rather protect any of the farmer workforce housing? That they are in no way impacted by any of these affordable housing guidelines that have been crammed in the last couple of years? Do you, is there an exclusion in there to make sure that there's in no way affects them?
Commissioner, the, the farm worker housing allowance in, in, that we currently have is, is wholly unaffected, is not affected at all by this amendment. That there's already an allowance for a higher number of, of, of units than would otherwise be permitted for, for normal development, for, for farm worker housing. Nothing in here is, is changing or affecting that in, in any way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Adam?
Okay. Ask Israel to, if, would, would you like to run through on the text that, that's proposed, that'd be beneficial at this point? Well, we, we're ready for that if the board is, is ready. And I'll ask Israel to just very briefly run through the, the text changes and identify those that are conforming to the plan versus the, the new things that are, that are new, that would be new changes.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is the second of the code that deals with the definitions. It's been amended to be in accordance with the new changes of the plan. And this is where the percentages have been updated and the definition also has, has been changed. The next page is the table that Mr. Gormley was making references to the minimum site, sizes that are being removed to allow for the reduction of the minimum lot size without specific requirement for the minimum size of, for the sites. And this is, this is in the section 60102 of the Land Development Code. The next section changes is in the Affordable Housing Development itself in the Land Development Code. And this section makes references to the affordable, for the new affordable housing definition. Again, the 20% or more of the dwelling units available, available to households with gross income at below 100%. And this is where the percentages are being updated. And then this change here is the, the code change for the, the, the building types to be allowed, either apartments, and with exception of apartment and townhouses with more than four attached units that, which maybe also be used in affordable housing developments in a PD or plan development, which is approved for residential developments. This will be through the minor change process regardless of otherwise approved dwelling unit types. These are the setbacks also being updated in this subsection number two of the Affordable Housing Section. Also as mentioned by Mr. Gormley. Then we go to the section of the density bonus. And again, this is where the board may approve the density on FAR for bonuses for affordable housing. And this is through the PD. And then also the specific requirement for the site that it has to be served by public water and sewer services. And it cannot be located within the coastal high hazard and has to be wholly within the urban service area for these projects. This one again makes specific changes for the percentages and the minimum percentage for the total proposed units that has to be affordable to qualify for the bonuses. It also gives an example for the percentages being required in this subsection here for the sample development example. And then the, the last section that doesn't have any change for this is the mobile home park for developments. And then moving on for the changes of the plan developments, this is section 50307. As, as, as mentioned it, the, there will be a possibility to change the dwelling type for single-family, two-family, triplex or quadplex to single-family, two-family, triplex or quadplex for affordable housing developments. And this is for PD's developments that would not have to go through a public hearing to change, but it will be administratively modified. And that was also being updated in this table, table one, table 5.1 of the same section that's been added to one of those changes that can be done administratively. And that concludes the overview of the text changes for the affordable housing amendment.
I don't see anyone with questions. Okay. We can continue, Adam.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. The, the last item on today's workshop is LDC 22-1406, dealing with requirements regarding gopher tortoise habitat and significant wildlife habitat. Next slide, please, Israel. Just brief history on this, the, the issue started with an inquiry whether the, whether the county could regulate protections for gopher tortoises beyond what state regulations provide. The, the response was, the determination was that the county does not have jurisdiction to regulate the species, the animals themselves, but can regulate the habitat. So based on that, the board had directed and, and considered some potential land development code amendments there last summer. It was the subject of a workshop in September and the first public hearing in October. Next slide, please, Israel. So there's three groups of, of changes that are, that are included in this amendment. The first would require that if an applicant identified gopher tortoise habitat on site, or if, or if county identified gopher tortoise habitat on site, then the applicant would be required to do a gopher tortoise burrow survey. And the way it's, it's drafted, that survey would, would need to be 100% of the site. And it would need to be prepared by a, a author, a Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission authorized gopher tortoise. authorized gopher tortoise agent. And that is a, a specific qualification that the state provides. Um, and that would identify active and inactive gopher burrows on site and any proposed relocation of those gopher tortoise, gopher tortoises. It would also require the applicant or the property owner to, um, to, to make an affirmative statement, uh, or written statement indicating whether they have or have not been determined to have violated any gopher tortoise regulations within the state of Florida. The second change, um, to this, the second proposed change is, um, what I would characterize as, as an incentive, a, a non-mandatory incentive for preservation of additional significant wildlife habitat, uh, on the site. So currently, the county's regulations require that in, in certain circumstances, a portion of the site, uh, be retained and, and kept, uh, as significant wildlife habitat. And what this amendment would do is it would provide an incentive for owners to preserve more than they were required to by providing for smaller lot sizes internal to a project. So not on the per- periphery perimeter, but internal to the project. It would allow for lot sizes, uh, lot size reductions of up to 10% with the total reduction being less than or equal to the additional land area preserved. So for example, if 10 acres were required to be preserved and applicant were to voluntarily preserve an additional acre, they could make up that, that land, that, that acre by reducing lot sizes within the project up to 10% per lot for a total not to exceed one acre of reduction. So this was, uh, this also, um, pairs with an amendment that was done to the Land Development Code that, that supports the concept of, um, considering smaller lot sizes as an incentive for additional significant wildlife habitat preservation. The last change, um, is one that would provide for increased penalties for unpermitted land alterations that on, on land is determined to be significant wildlife habitat. It, so currently, um, the, our enforcement tool for unpermitted land alteration is, is a, is to take owner ultimately to the code board if we're not able to, um, to, to get compliance, through staff efforts. And what this change would do is it would and put in place a requirement that if somebody were to impact unpermittedly significant wildlife habitat, that the first option is to, is to restore that habitat. And it, uh, that is a multiple, you know, could be a, an extended process depending on how, what level of impact there was. But that would be the obligation of the, uh, of the property owner to, to restore that habitat. And in the event that, that it's determined by the county that, um, that it's, it's not feasible to, uh, to, um, restore the habitat or if it finds that the alteration would have otherwise been permissible, it provides for a payment of a, of a penalty to a, uh, environmental, um, restoration fund. And, uh, what that fund would be used for is for, um, uh, county efforts to preserve and restore significant wildlife habitat. That's, those are the three amendments, uh, here, um, available for any questions at this time. And Mr. Monsanto is also prepared to run through the, the substance of, of the text amendments.
Uh, Commissioner Owen?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I, I'm not going to support the very first one. It just seems kind of punitive, uh, i- in a way. So that, that would just be, if there was any other type of violation anywhere else in the state of Florida with, for an unlimited amount of time in the past, that that would just have to be disclosed. How, then what? The, what, how do we enforce? Do we enforce something or what's that mean?
It, it, it doesn't, it would not change the, the regulatory controls that would be on, on the project. I believe that that was, uh, uh, requested, um, for informational purposes. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't change the, the, the rules that apply to the development of the site.
So, so, so I guess I'm just trying to find the purpose. Is there any type of enforcement we can do? Or, um, would they lose any zoning rights whatsoever if they check yes or, or however we decided to do that? I, I guess I'm just not clear on that.
Yeah, it, the way, they wouldn't lose any rights, nor would they be subject to, um, um, enforcement action by the county for, um, for violation of rules that weren't, that were not county rules.
Yeah.
So if, if there was a, you know, impermissible relocation or improper treatment or of a, of a gopher tortoise, um, it, it elsewhere, it wouldn't change the rules that, that we apply, wouldn't change the zoning.
But, but in those examples, not to cut you off, in those examples, state law kicks in. So I don't, I, right? I mean, that's-
It, it would be, uh, that, it, it, regulations dealing with the gopher tortoises would be state regulations. So that would be states. Yeah.
I, I'm not going to support that one. Uh, in the, uh, I, I, see, I was thinking three. I, I thought that, um, one had to do with some type of premature, i- i- if there's some type of premature development that disrupts a habitat, which I agree with. If people jump the gun, I think similar to cutting down oak trees and things like that when they don't have any type of zoning or PD and they, they jump the gun and they find out a violation. I'm absolutely for punishing those wrongdoers in that situation. Does that fit into one of these? Am I missing that or is that enough?
Commissioner, that, that, that does fit into the third one. So that is, that is the un- unpermitted. And, and the scenario that you described is, is, um, I would call an early start scenario where somebody would have, perhaps going through the permitting process sees at the end that they're going to be able to impact some significant wildlife habitat. And they jump the gun and they start work before the permit is issued. This, this would impose a, a, this would impose a sanction for that type of activity that, that wouldn't simply allow that to be cured by the issuance of a permit. So there would be some, some, some ramifications for the early start.
Yeah, I may be able to get behind that. I mean, that's kind of a, um, you know, something we wish people wouldn't do just to begin with is to, to begin, um, any type of tree cutting or, or any type of significant property alterations before coming through us. So I, you know, I, I can see me getting behind that. Uh, and then obviously number two, I think is a benefit for the developer and, and, um, the gopher tortoises. So, uh, so I, I, I just won't be supporting the first one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, if there are no other questions, we, Mr. Monsanto can run through the, the substance of the text.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, the, the first section of the code that's being modified with this text amendment is section 4013, which is the natural resource permit. And this is the section where the new language is being added to require that, uh, survey by unauthorized, um, staff from the Florida Fish Wildlife Commission. The next change is on 40109, environmentally sensitive areas, upland significant wildlife habitat. And this is, um, the section where the new language is added, um, for the case of unpermitted, um, land alteration and, and how it has to be restored or preserved. That same section is being, uh, amended to add a new bullet point number nine for the, uh, to make the references to the provisions of the code 110607, which is a new section added, and that will be on the last, uh, slide. The next section is 40117. This is a new section being added. And this is for the, um, Significant Wildlife Habitat Protection and Preservation Fund. This is a fund that, um, is, is, is established to ensure that funds collected as a result of the unpermitted land alteration of significant wildlife habitat is used for the restoration, acquisition, and protection of significant wildlife habitat in our county. And it also provides for the source of those funds. And the next section, uh, change is the, uh, 50307, changes to approve PD's districts. And this is similar to the, uh, the same section that's changed by the other text amendment for the, uh, uh, changes to plan developments administratively. And this is only in, in those instances where the, um, um, development that preserves significant wildlife habitat in excess of the maximum required by the code, that may be reduced, the minimum lot size and, and width for lots only in the interior, as Mr. Gormley, uh, explained it. And not, and then consequently, the table 501, changes to approve plans is being amended to include that additional provision to be, um, reviewed administratively. Uh, this table, uh, from 60101, this is a schedule of district area height, bulk and placement regulations. A new footnote is being added also consistent with that minimum, uh, lot sizes that will be allowed to be, uh, reduced to preserve significant wildlife habitat. And and then the sections 110605, this is the remedies for unpermitted land alteration for significant wildlife habitat for the property owner. Either restoration or also, uh, the payment of, of penalties. And that's the, uh, last section being added, which is exact specification for those, uh, penalties to be, uh, put on unpermitted land alterations. And as Mr. Gormley explained, the different scenarios, the mandatory and also the restoration permit, uh, payment for the unpermitted land alteration. And that concludes the, uh, overall text changes for this, uh, text amendment.
Okay. I don't see any hands, so I'm just gonna go ahead and ask anyone has any questions before we, um, adjourn the, the workshop.
I just have, I have one-
Commissioner Wostin?
Thank you. Does this effectively make us, um, the most stringent, um, process for this particular item in the entire state of Florida, Mr. Gormley?
Hey, I don't think, I would, I don't think I could answer that question about the, the rest of the jurisdictions in Florida. The 100% survey for gopher tortoises is, 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 um, I would believe not, not a, a, a wide requirement throughout the state if, if it's required at all. But if, if, we'd have to do some research on what other jurisdictions might, might have to, to be able to answer that question. But it does increase, um, you know, both the penalties and, and the requirements in terms of the, the survey. So not insignificantly.
And what sparked, what sparked this? Did somebody, did somebody disturb a big habitat of them or something?
I, I believe that what started the conversation was some, um, part of it, at least part of it was some instances of, of improper treatment of gopher tortoises, not in Hillsborough County. I, I don't, I don't believe that there was a Hillsborough County, incident or say that, that drove this amendment.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wostin. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you, and I'll, I'll, I'll get more information on this. I know that, um, Commissioner Smith was very, very dedicated to this. But as I understand and remember, um, gopher tortoises are, um, significantly, uh, a local species, um, that doesn't really exist so much outside of, um, this county. Uh, and, and they are disappearing, uh, at a great, great number. Uh, and that's why they're at relocation, there's all kinds of, um, uh, information. But there's been, um, there's been significant times in the past where in new developments in Hillsborough County, they have just, um, the gopher tortoises on property, uh, on the properties never made it out. They weren't relocated, um, and they are growing increasingly, uh, rare and threatened. But I'll, I'll get accurate information that we have, um, for the next hearing. Cause we did have a lot of, um, or for the time when we, we discussed this because we have had a lot of information about this in the past.
Thank you. Seeing no, no other hands, I think we can adjourn the meeting. Thanks everyone for your participation and support.
Thank you. Have a good day.